All right, we're all set. I'll be upstairs in a minute.
Okay.
Hey Paul, you're unmuted, just so you know.
Oh, thanks.
Paul, are you ready to get started? We're going on your end.
Yes, we are.
We have a quorum, so I'll start the meeting at 1:34. Start with a roll call. Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Flick, present. Commissioner Lund. Commissioner Steig.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Present.
Commissioner Wedberg.
Present.
Commissioner Whittry. We haven't seen her. We'll start with the approval of the January, the adoption of the January 25th meeting minutes.
So move on Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Is there a second?
I'll speak seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner Steig. All in favor for approval of the January 25th meeting minutes? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Steig?
Yes. Oh, am I on mute? No, yes.
I'm on mute. There we go. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whittry, oh, Commissioner Whittry is present.
Thank you, Commissioner Whittry. Okay, we'll start with the reading of the rules. Order of business, the order of business of the hearing shall be as follows. Call to order and roll call with recording of members present. Approval of minutes, reading of the hearing rules. Presentation of dockets, which includes staff presentation, applicant presentation, and questions from members. Recession for 30 minutes. Consideration of dockets, which includes public comment. Rebuttal by the applicant, questions from members, voting, and adjournment. Presentation of dockets, the order of business for each docket shall be as follows. Presentation by the City Planning Commission staff. Presentation by the applicant or their representative. The applicant or applicant may appear on their behalf or be represented by a duly authorized agent. Only one representative may speak on behalf of requests and must pre-register with the staff of the City Planning Commission. Other representatives or speakers may sign up to provide comments during the public comment portion of the meeting. The applicant shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Questions for members, the members have an opportunity to ask questions of the staff or the applicant. Recession, the commission shall take a 30-minute recess to allow members of the public to comment. Public comment, rules, only written public comment will be allowed. Live public comment will not be allowed. No member of the public may submit more than one written comment per agenda item. The public comment form will be made available at the start of the meeting and will close at the end of the 30-minute recess. Public comments must be submitted electronically on the form provided by the City Planning Commission. Any comment missing this information will not be read aloud. Each submission must contain the commenter's first and last name, the commenter's address, whether the commenter is being paid in connection with his or her comments, the agenda item. Reading of public comments, a moderator will read into the record all comments pertaining to that item that have been submitted in accordance with these rules. Comments will be read aloud in a normal speaking voice. The moderator will discontinue reading a comment once it exceeds two minutes. Rebuttal by the applicant following the public comment period. If there's opposition, the authorized representative of the application is allowed to rebuttal not to exceed two minutes. Questions from members following the public comment rebuttal, comment and rebuttal, the members have an opportunity to ask questions of the staff or the applicant. Voting, making a motion, the member making a motion shall clearly state their name when making a motion. For example, I, Commissioner Flick, move to approve deny the request. This member seconding the motion shall clearly state their name when seconding the motion. For example, I, Commissioner Flick, second the motion made by Commissioner Flick. The chair will restate the motion confirming who made and who seconded the motion. The chair will request a verbal vote from each member by roll call. Each member will indicate yea to vote in support of the motion or nay to vote in opposition. Now for the presentation of dockets, and the first one up is zoning docket 00522.
This is zoning docket 522, which affects a property on North Dorjeanwa, right up just off of Bayou Road and Seventh Ward. The application is for a zoning change that would pull the HUMU mixed-use district that includes the neighboring property as well as other properties along Bayou Road and generally kind of around that intersection of Bayou Road and North Broad. Pull it over one lot to include this property, which is currently residentially zoned. It's a property that had a commercial zoning until the 1970s and thereafter. It's developed with an electrical contractors office, so a single-story metal structure. But it has been zoned residential for a number of years and certainly since 2015. And really what the applicant's trying to do is align the zoning with the current non-residential land use and also provide opportunities for a wider range of redevelopment options in the future, should it be redeveloped. In general, in the city's historic neighborhoods, the intention is for zoning to align with land use patterns. And so generally where, you know, properties have been non-residential, they'll have a non-residential zoning, where they've historically been resident, they'll have residential zoning. And so kind of in keeping with that concept, given the non-residential history here, and certainly its adjacency to a larger HUMU district, it makes more sense, in the staff's view, to have this included within the mixed-use zoning designation rather than the residential zoning that currently has. And so the staff is supportive of the application and does recommend approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant or an applicant's representative on the call?
Yes, hi, my name is Alexander Adamek, and I'm the applicant for the, this project.
Thank you. Could you just state your address and you'll have two minutes?
Sure, our office is located at 1139 Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard here in New Orleans. And we just wanted to thank the staff for their report. Again, we felt that this property should absolutely be part of this HUMU zoning district, and that's, we were, and that's why we brought this to your attention and are asking us change. Just so you know, the, the land did recently change hands, but there's no intention to have the leasur of the property, or, I'm sorry, the lesee of the property, you know, move out of this property of the electric contractor who's been there for a number of years, and is expected that he will stay there for a number of years, but he's not the owner of the property. And so the idea here is we just wanted to kind of like, because this building is obviously commercial in nature and it's adjacent to this HUMU district, it's just that we'd like to have the land be zoned HUMU at this time so that in the future, if the tenant does decide to move, that there would be more options in terms of the redevelopment of this property, kind of in keeping with the local district. And that is it.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff or the applicant?
I have a question, Commissioner Lund. So is, is the decision, I understand, how much of the decision, how much was factored, how much of a factor was it that it is a commercial structure on the property relative to the fact that it's adjacent to HUMU? If you could address that, like, if this were a residential peering structure, would you have looked at this much differently?
I'm sorry, is that a question for?
Yeah, that question is, how much did it factor into your recommendation that it's a commercial built, appearance building?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very central to the, the analysis. We have, you know, a spot zoning policy, and this is technically a spot zone, although it doesn't create a spot by itself. It, it expands the district to include this one property. And so the question is, is that justified? The spot zoning policy is very much about the physical characteristics of the structure on the lot and giving a property with non-residential physical characteristics and non-residential zoning. So if this had been developed with, with two residences, we would not have recommended approval because there would have been that, number one, that alignment with the zoning and the existing land use, but also the structure itself would not qualify under the spot zoning policy. So in this case, because it does have a commercial use, any structure that really is pragmatic can only be used for commercial purposes. I mean, number one meets the spot zoning policy. It also kind of meets this broader intention around aligning zoning and land use that tends to happen in the older neighborhoods.
No, thank you. That's really helpful. Thanks so much.
Stephen, I also have a question. How does the, the change of hands of the building or the land owner affect this at all? Or, or it doesn't, given that they're the applicant?
Yeah, it, it doesn't at all. I mean, the, and it's my understanding that the, the change in hands has already occurred. It's not something that is to occur. But, yeah, you know, in any circumstance, zoning is applied to the land, and so an application can only be submitted by the person who owns it at the particular moment in time the application is submitted. But once it's in effect, you know, should the property change hands, the zoning would remain in effect.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners for staff or the applicant? Okay, hearing then we'll move on, zoning docket 00622.
Zoning docket 00622 is a request for conditional use permit a community center in a SRS suburban single-family residential district, an HUC historic urban corridor use restriction of related districts, and an EC enhancement quarter design of related districts. The applicants propose constructing a new 6,812 square foot community center with parking on site. As currently designed, the building facades and site design are somewhat problematic. Comments were made during the December 15th DAC meeting that requested changes to the building's facade and site that will substantially change their overall design and site layout. Staff also found additional deficiencies and setbacks and parking layout that will trigger substantial redesign. Staff is supportive of the overall proposed use. However, the site is in need of the significant design changes that could result in the need for variances. As such, staff recommends a deferral to allow the applicants enough time to incorporate proposed provisos into the proposal to ensure no variances are needed. A deferral to the March 8th public hearing will give the applicants enough time to incorporate the required provisos into their site's design. Therefore, staff recommends a deferral to the March, March 8th public hearing.
Thank you. Does there happen to be the applicant or applicant's representative on the call? Maybe not if we're deferring. Are there any questions from the commission for the, for the staff? Hearing then we'll move on, zoning docket 00722.
Zoning docket 00722 is a request for conditional use to allow a principal bed and breakfast in an HMR3 historic Marigny Tremé Bywater Residential District. The subject property is currently developed with two structures, a single-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling that together were at one time used as a dwelling for a single family. It was functionally a single-family dwelling, even though it comprised two structures. And the Department of Safety and Permits has classified it as a single-family dwelling. These, these dwellings date to, they date from the mid to late 19th century, and they've been used pretty much as, as residences since at least 1997. No, excuse me, they've been used as bed and breakfast facilities until at least 1997, when it was, when it reportedly began operation as a bed and breakfast establishment. Site also includes an in-ground swimming pool. The applicant is seeking to reestablish the property as a principal bed and breakfast, a use that now is permitted only as a conditional use per Article 9, Section 9.2, Table 9.1 of the current, of the city's current CZO. Collectively, the building contains five bedrooms. Four of the five bedrooms would be used as guest rooms with one to be reserved for the operator as required by Article 20, Section 23I2A. A principal bed and breakfast is category, is categorized under the residential use. It is similar in nature to a small hotel, which is considered a commercial use. But because there's a requirement that's principal bed and breakfasts have either an owner or an operator living on site, the impact is thought to be less impactful than that of a hotel. The use standards for a bed and breakfast are intended to help mitigate any loud noises or other negative impacts that the use could have on the adjacent properties. Therefore, the impacts of this particular bed and breakfast on adjacent land, on adjacent properties would be limited. The proposal does not interfere with the master plan. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of zoning docket 722, subject to five provisos.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or applicant's representative on the call?
Yes, this is Chad. Let's go. Owner of the property.
Hey Chad, could you just state your address and you'll have two minutes?
Sure, 25 Charters, New Orleans, Louisiana.
Thank you.
Appreciate you hearing us out on this. Obviously, we did purchase the property that's been used as a bed and breakfast since the 90s. No physical changes being requested. This is really an attempt, born in New Orleans, raised in New Orleans, this is a really unique property. Original structure is from 1854, and it's remained relatively unchanged. And this is an attempt, more than anything, to make sure that we preserve the property as it is today. And we create a situation at the property that allows us to continue to own it for many, many decades into the future, operating primarily as a bed and breakfast. There were a lot of limitations that we ran into in the purchasing process. Appraiser, for instance, there being some separate buildings, you know, didn't want to give credit to buildings that weren't attached, and some really specific things that kind of limited us on borrowing just to purchase the property on the front end. We did have a neighborhood participation meeting in July. No negative feedback, and obviously no variance or waivers necessary for this change. And no in-ground swimming pool either. We do have an above-ground, just a little hot tub in the back courtyard. So just want to make a note on the record that we do not have an in-ground swimming pool. But, you know, excited to hear what the feedback is. And hopefully, at, at this point, we can move forward. And that way, if one day we don't want to be on property, we can have somebody that can be living on property and operating it. It is a small operation currently, but I think it offers a lot of diversity, and I think it offers a little more authentic experience for guests who maybe don't want to stay at some of the bigger-name hotels and want a more authentic experience of, hey, look, this is a really interesting building that offers them, in our opinion, something closer to what you expect in New Orleans and especially in the Marigny area.
Thank you, Mr. Let's go. Are there any questions for the applicant or of staff?
I had a question for the applicant. This is Commissioner Whittry. So at your NPP, you did not have any neighborhood opposition?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we started this process by contacting our neighbors on the front end, at least on both sides, and to let them know, hey, look, this is something we're interested in. We want to make sure everybody's on board, even before applying for any changes. And so we've had those conversations personally, and then, of course, brought it to the neighborhood meeting as well, and didn't have any, no negative feedback on that end.
Okay, smart. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, hearing then we'll move on to the next zoning docket 00822.
Good afternoon. Zoning docket 822 is a request for conditional use to permit the commercial use over 5,000 square feet in gross floor area and in H of New District. The municipal address is 1221 Constant Street. The applicant, in this case, proposes the renovation of a former warehouse into a 9,600-square-foot boxing gym facility, which is considered as a health club for zoning purposes on a 11,100-square-foot site fronting on Constant Street. The health club would be occupied primarily with the fitness spaces in the center and ancillary office and locker rooms in the wings. Due to the fact that the proposal simply consists of a use change with minimal changes to the building, the existing site conditions may be renovated because the proposal does not reach the threshold to constitute a substantial renovation. In the event the applicant volunteers to come into compliance with building design and permanent space familiar with the site, the staff has reproduced applicable standards in the staff report. The commercial development within a former industrial structure would operate near a corridor character by primarily mixed-use transit-oriented commercial development pattern and create an additional commercial type indoor amenity and employment for individuals living in the area. Staff believes the request meets the conditional use approval standards, the purpose and intent of the HUMU district, and is compatible with the mixed-use medium-density future land use designation of the plan for the 21st century, providing a compatible scale with the neighborhood and providing for pedestrian access. In tandem with the provisos to mitigate any potential adverse impacts, the commercial space in excess of 5,000 square feet is compatible with its commercial, post-industrial, and residential surroundings that would not result in prejudice to nearby residential properties. Therefore, staff finds their proposal appropriate for its location and supports the request. The staff recommends approval of zoning docket 822, subject to one waiver and seven provisos.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or applicant's representative on the call?
Yes, this is Miles Granderson, 800 Barone, representing the applicant. I'd like to thank staff for the review and the report. As noted, this is HUMU, where anything between 5,000 and 10,000 feet for commercial use is a, is a conditional use for the size, not for the, for the use. This will be a boxing gym defined as a health club, which is a permitted use. This will be a boxing gym defined as a health club, which is a permitted use in H U M U. Again, it's just the, it's just the size piece that we're here for. And so we're good with the staff report and we would ask for approval. Only small, small note there is if somehow during the, the, between now and the, the final approval, if they wanted to open up at, temporarily at five thousand square feet, I think they'd be able to do that even with proviso six. But I think we're good.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant or for staff?
I have, I have a question. So it was used commercially before?
Yes, it was, it was the warehouse, or technically I guess that would be industrially. It was the warehouse for the Bridge Lounge before.
Okay, and so you're, the use here for the, for the gym is not necessarily, doesn't necessarily need five thousand square feet. It's just that you were occupying a space that is already five thousand square feet and you're using it for something else. Is that?
Well, it, the, the plan is roughly ninety-seven hundred square feet for, for the gym. And that's the full space that Bridge House used before they moved out. And that's the space that they would, would occupy. By right, they could occupy five thousand of that, but to go up to the, to the ten thousand, they would need this conditional use. And so that's what we're here for is, is to do the conditional use because it doesn't really, five thousand would be really small and they wouldn't really be able to fully, fully function. As you can see on the plans there, the, you know, even in the space provided, the, the ring in the middle really takes up pretty good portion of the space even with the full ninety-seven.
Okay, I see. So it is, it is, the space is required. It's not that you just are going to be occupying the building which is already over five thousand square feet and you need.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And just clarification, Bridge House, the, 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 the one on the off-ramp there, not Bridge Lounge, correct?
Yes, I did, I did say.
I just, I was looking at it on, on the map, so I want to make sure I was looking at the right line. Thank you.
Yeah, John's the first time, but, but Bridge House, yes.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions from commissioners? And none will move on to the next zoning docket zero zero nine twenty.
Zoning docket zero zero nine twenty-two is a request for conditional use to permit a new five-story hotel on a vacant lot at seven forty-nine St. Charles Avenue. The applicant proposes to build a twenty-nine thousand square foot, five-story hotel that would contain twenty units for guests and no off-street parking or loading. The proposed hotel is of average size in comparison to other previous requests for hotels in the CBD five district. Is not as large and tall as hotels found elsewhere in the CBD and the building's design and scale is compatible with the surrounding development. While hotels are generally permitted uses in the CBD area, they are classified as a conditional use in the CBD five district because that district is intended to be more residential in character than other parts of the CBD. Commercial uses are also interspersed throughout the CBD five district, but in a less concentrated and less intensive manner. The question being raised is if the addition of another hotel in CBD five district still meets the purpose of the district. While the CBD five district is intended for a lesser concentration of commercial uses than other CBD districts, the CZO does not determine what the exact threshold is between an appropriate and inappropriate number of hotels in the district. Consequently, people will disagree about what constitutes an over-concentration of these uses. Since two thousand fifteen, when hotels became conditional uses in the CBD five district, staff recommended approval of the few other similar requests for hotels. Find that the use is compatible with the master plan and that the existing concentration of career, commercial uses in CBD five district is still currently lower than in other CBD districts. While staff is concerned about the overall effect of an over-concentration of hotels and other commercial uses in CBD five, because it would go against the intent of providing a lesser concentration of commercial uses than other CBD districts, it does not have data that would suggest approval of this hotel would significantly unbalance the ratio of commercial uses to residential uses in the district. The, this proposal still requires one waiver to be granted for the required off-street loading space. And though a waiver of the off-street loading space would not alter the character of the area or be detrimental to other properties in the district, the staff did find that the waiver request is the result of actions of the applicant. The conditional use was approved for this site in two thousand eighteen for a curb cut to access a vehicular use area located on the first floor of the property. The exclusion of an off-street loading space for this hotel represents a design choice by the applicant and thus does not meet all of the nine criteria as required. The applicant will need to modify the proposed design to comply with these requirements. The proposed use is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the CBD five zoning district regulations and with the master plan. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of the request, subject to thirteen provisos.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or applicant representative on the call?
Yes, Ken Gowland, Metro City Architect, sixty-five oh one Spanish Ford Boulevard, New Orleans, Louisiana. I just want to thank staff for its well-researched and comprehensive report. The report unambiguously points out that the proposed project is not only consistent with the plan for the twenty-first century, which allows hotels, but is also a pedestrian-friendly project that preserves the character and integrity of the adjacent developments and neighborhood. The staff report points out that the building's design and scale is compatible with surrounding development and that the waiver of one off-street loading space would not alter the character of the area or be detrimental to other properties in the district. As staff points out in the report, garage entrances and driveways that cut across sidewalks have a profoundly damaging effect on walkable urbanism, which is the intent of the multimodal corridor that this project resides within. The incorporation of curb cuts, driveways and garage entrances along St. Charles can be considered detrimental to the public welfare as it reduces the safety of pedestrians and conflicts with the historic character of the neighborhood. While staff is correct to point out that a prior proposal at the site included a driveway and garage door, the prior proposal was for a different use and occupancy. The new proposed hotel development can easily function without a garage entrance and curb cut. And as staff points out in the report, the proposed twenty-unit hotel is not expected to generate any significant increase in vehicular traffic that would be disruptive. While we overwhelmingly agree with the findings of the report, we do feel that the requested waiver of one loading space is necessary to ensure that the development of this property is consistent with the goals of the master plan and the requirements of the CZO, which include the incorporation of ground floor pedestrian uses along St. Charles Avenue frontage, as well as the prohibition of curb cuts, driveways and garage entrances along St. Charles Avenue. The property is an urban infill condition with no other access to surrounding streets or right-ofways. The existing property is extremely narrow with frontage limited to fifty feet along St. Charles Avenue. The incorporation of a driveway and garage entry as required for off-street loading would reduce this frontage and result in conditions that would negatively impact the project's ability to deliver on the intentions of the pedestrian-oriented urbanism required in these multimodal pedestrian corridors. Given staff comments, we respectfully request that the commission recommend the proposed project for approval as currently designed and allow for the waiver of one loading space as required to create a project that is consistent not only with the uses and requirements of the master plan and CZO, but with the historic development patterns of the neighborhood context. Thank you, guys.
Sorry, there we go. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant?
I'm going to squish it along. Could you repeat that last, just the very last thing you said? I'm sorry, this is for the architect who just spoke, the very last thing you said about the waiver that you're asking for modification of one thing.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the content of the staff report, while it recommends approval of the conditional use request for the hotel, it does not recommend approval of the waiver of one off-street loading space. So to facilitate one off-street loading space at this location, we would have to install a curb cut, a driveway and a garage entrance into the front of the building because there are no other right-of-ways that are accessible. This is an infill inner block lot condition, so we only have frontage on St. Charles Avenue. The project is located within a multimodal pedestrian corridor. This overlay specifically restricts the installation of curb cuts, driveways and garage doors so that we have a healthy pedestrian environment within the historic urban core of New Orleans. And so the, we would have to basically not comply with the multimodal corridor restrictions in order to accommodate an off-street loading dock. The project, because of its bespoke twenty-unit nature, doesn't require off-street loading. They are going to have onsite laundry processing. They are not going to have massive deliveries. This is a very small hotel property. We're not going to have full-time residents who are constantly accepting deliveries of goods or services. And so, and also too, you know, we would point out that the historic condition along St. Charles Avenue between Poydras and Lee Circle is such that the majority of buildings on that corridor do not have any off-street loading available to them. And that would include the Lafayette Hotel, which also exists on the street. So staff was pretty clear in their review of the nine criteria for the waiver in that, you know, it would be an imposition to accommodate it. Staff also did point out that having that curb cut and driveway is going to impact the safety and character of the pedestrian-oriented corridor here. And so that is why we are requesting that waiver. It, it's not required. We don't have a traffic. I mean, it's, it's, it's not required for the function of the building. It would impact negatively the pedestrian environment of this corridor. It would impact our ability to meet all of the requirements of the multimodal corridor and the ground floor usage requirements. And as such, we're requesting this waiver as part of the conditional use.
So, go ahead Kathleen.
I just, maybe you were going to ask the same thing if Steph could respond to that. Okay.
I was.
Yeah, so the, this was kind of a challenging variance to look at. So first, you know, what the applicant was saying about the multimodal pedestrian corridor, limiting or actually restricting curb cuts in this area is, is absolutely true. And, and someone came through with an application to, for a conditional use for a curb cut for this property a few years ago in twenty eighteen. So when the staff was considering this off-street loading space, just like with any variance, we have to answer to the nine criteria. Most of the criteria were met by this proposal. And, you know, the ones that were met generally were whether or not this would alter the character of the neighborhood, which, you know, as was said just a minute ago by the applicant, you know, many, many non-residential properties in the, in the district do not have off-street loading facilities. And we also stated that, you know, actually installing curb cut loading facilities on-site would disrupt that, you know, the, the pedestrian experience and possibly cause conflicts between pedestrians on the right of way. The, the one, or the, actually it was the, the two criteria that the staff found that didn't meet was that this was something that was actually caused by the applicant. This is because, you know, the last request that we received for this property was a similar building with a driveway and a vehicular use area in rear of the property. So that is, you know, a shift in the design. So we already know that it's possible to, to do that. And I think that's where we kind of got stuck and not in that it will alter the character of the actual neighborhood.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on, on that? So what, what's the second of, of the nine criteria that you thought was not met?
Yeah, so that would be, so the first was, yeah, the first was special conditions and circumstances result from actions of the applicant. And the second would be strict adherence to the property regulations would not result in a demonstrable hardship upon that.
And what happened to that? You said there was a conditional applicant, use application years ago that did have a driveway. What happened? To, was that application approved and, 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 and the conditional use permit was issued?
Yes, it was approved. Plans were recorded. And as part of this application, that conditional use ordinance would be rescinded.
Right. And what happened to that development? It didn't, it didn't happen, obviously. Do you know what happened?
The sale. I, I personally don't. That was a, that was a project that looked very similar to this except for it's a residential use and multifamily use. I, I'm not entirely sure what happened to it.
Does the applicant, Mr. Gowland, do you happen to know?
Um, no, I, I can tell you that the, the, the prior proposal at this, at this vacant piece of property, I can affirm Mr. Massey's comment. It was for a multifamily development. It did include off-street parking, as Mr. Massey has pointed out, which this project does not. And it did include a rental, a ground floor tenant, a commercial rental space, whereas this project now would have a hotel lobby with ground floors uses consistent with the CZO requirement. So it was a different program and had some different spaces, different requirements. This one, and as staff points out, their report, this type of hotel, there typically is not a expectation for parking associated with it as per the, you know, as per all of our data regarding hospitality uses. And so I think once that off-street parking was removed from the equation, the project in its current manifestation is more able to respond to the multimodal pedestrian corridor intents and restrictions as well as the ground floor usage requirements that are also part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant or of staff?
Commissioner, I just done a question about this. So there are four floors with hotel rooms, but these are like large hotel rooms, correct? This is a, this is like eight hundred plus square feet per unit?
I, I think they vary. I think we have a three, a three-bedroom configuration, a two-bedroom configuration and a one-bedroom configuration. Again, these unit configurations align with the current demand that we see for different types of hotel configurations within this market. So this project itself was based on sort of plugging a gap within the demand for a multi-bedroom hotel configuration that is a little bit different than what is offered in what we would consider more traditional hotel arrangement. Now with that said, it still has a lobby, a check-in. There'll be hotel amenities at the ground floor. There's still back-of-house servicing requirements that are accommodated at the ground floor. So those components of the hotel are very similar to what we would see in a typical hospitality occupancy. But the actual configuration is a little bit different and it's responding to sort of changes in demand for the hospitality consumer.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for the applicant or of staff? Hearing then we'll move on to zoning docket ten twenty-two.
Zoning docket ten twenty-two is a request for a conditional use to permit the retail sale of packaged alcoholic beverages in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district. The petition site is located on the corner of Jackson Avenue and Barone Street in the central city neighborhood and contains an existing commercial structure that was historically used for auto-related purposes such as a gas station and an auto repair shop. The municipal addresses are twenty-one thirty-seven to through twenty-one thirty-nine Barone Street and eighteen oh one Jackson Avenue. The applicant is proposing to incorporate the retail sale of alcoholic beverages into the existing operation of a commissary kitchen and the retail sale of prepared foods. The proposal does not include any changes to the site. Only changes to the existing retail portion of the floor plan are proposed to, to accommodate the sale of packaged alcoholic beverages. The sale of packaged alcoholic beverages is not inherently more impactful in terms of traffic, activity and other effects on the adjacent properties than the sale of other food and beverages at the current site. Staff cannot assume that alcoholic sales will be problematic since this is a question of how the business. Staff cannot assume that alcoholic sales will be problematic since this is a question of how the business will be managed. In addition, the proposal meets all approval standards in Article Four of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and is consistent with the master plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of zoning docket 1022 subject to one standard proviso.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or applicant representative on the call?
Yes, hi, my name is Anne Lloyd. I'm the owner of Nola War Commissary and Catering Company at 2139 Barone Street, the corner of Jackson Avenue. We purchased the property in 2014. It was most recently operated as a fresh seafood retailer. So there is some history of food retail at the location, although it's obviously was originally built as a, as an auto service station. Our business up to this point has primarily been catering. We have offered a pickup of prepared foods at our location. At this time, we would like to transition our business model more to a retail operation. To meet the growing needs of the neighborhood. Our objective is to offer a wide variety of goods, prepared foods, snacks, staples, sweets, as well as beer and wine. So we're not looking to simply be a beverage retailer, more of a one-stop shop for meal planning. So for example, if someone came in to buy shrimp creole and a salad and some cookies, they could also purchase a bottle of wine. We reached out to as many of our neighbors as we could in this process. And the response have been, responses have been overwhelmingly positive. This neighborhood has quite a bit of new residential development. Since we've been here, as well as continued commercial development on the Reeth Castle Haley corridor. Which we're very excited to be a part of. And we look forward to your comments and answering any questions may have.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Are there any questions for the applicant or of staff? No, okay. Hearing them, we'll move on to subdivision docket 00122. Thank you, Ms. Lahn.
Subdivision 122 is a request for the re-subdivision of lots 10 and C11 until lot 10A. On square 1551, the third municipal district bonded by Morapaw Street, Esplanade Avenue, Arcadia Court, Fortun Street and Mystery Street. The municipal addresses are 3221 Morapaw Street and 1551 Mystery Street. So this request is being reviewed against Article Five, Section 5.5.2 sidelines. As a subdivision would create an L-shaped lot with a dogleg extension that exceeds 15% of the lot. The request is also being reviewed against Article Five, Section 5.5.5, double frontage lots. Which states that double frontage lots should be avoided except where to provide separation of existing residential development. Or where the established urban, or in an established urban environment. Where the similar, similar development, similar development pattern exists in the surrounding blocks. So both the double frontage and the L-shaped conditions already exist in this case. As existing lots 10 and C11 are utilized and owned by a single owner for a residential and accessory use. The approval of this subdivision would formalize those conditions, which would result in equally sized L-shaped lots. Whereas a dogleg percentage wouldn't be able to be calculated. In addition, this request would bring proposed lot 10A into compliance. Would states accessory structures be located on the same lot as the principal use. The staff believes this is an overall improvement of what's already there. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request subject to three standard provisos.
Thank you. Is there an applicant or applicant's representative on the call?
Hello, thank you for hearing me today. My name is Kenny Tasson and I'd like to combine these two lots that I already own into a single property. As far as representing my case, I believe the planning commission staff has done a good job in doing that for me. I appreciate that the staff sees the uniqueness of the situation and are using good sense practices. And finding the re-subdivision approval. I bought the blighted property at 1551 Mystery Street over 10 years ago. To the appreciation and support of my neighbors, the Fodberg St. John Neighborhood Association and the City of New Orleans Mayor's Office. The house was featured, that sat on the lot in a city business article in 2011 on blight. And I had to live next to that thing since Hurricane Katrina. Not only was it a fire and safety hazard, it was also a termite-infested, harbored vermin. Because the property had been vacant for so long, it was often a site of unwanted vagrants and abandoned cars. My neighbors and I, on multiple occasions, had to call the city or the police to remove the. Abandoned cars and, and the undesirables at that location. After purchasing the property, I had the house torn down and approved a lot with fruit and palm trees. And now we grow fruit, vegetables and flowers for our own use. I've improved the property and removed the blight. And now I wish to combine the two so I can enjoy the lot. Till its full benefits as, as a whole, you know, by joining the two lots together. I hope y'all agree with that, the staff does. So please approve my request to join the two.
Thank you, Mr. Tasson. Are there any questions for the applicant or of staff? Hearing them, we'll move on to the property disposition 00122. Thank you.
Hi everyone, one second, pull that up. This is the consideration for the disposition of property consisting of lot 12, square 34 of the Metairie Parks Division over in Lakeview. And any right or ownership the city may have to claim, the municipal address of 6303 Belair Drive. Done about West Harrison Avenue, 26th Street, Belair Drive and Fortley Drive. The address is 6303 Belair Drive. The city proposes to sell this rectangular vacant lot at the intersection of Belair Drive and West Harrison. The lot is in the SLRS1 district. The lot is approximately 120 feet on its northern and West Harrison Avenue sides. The frontage is on Belair Drive. The rear lot line is 20 feet, the total lot area is approximately 2,400 square feet. The staff recommends approval of the disposition on, for 00122. With one proviso.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the city on the call? Oh, you, you are?
Yeah, I'm new, sorry.
I don't, I don't believe we have anyone speaking as applicant today.
Thank you.
So, so someone, someone has in mind, I guess, to purchase this when it goes to auction, is that correct? Okay, I guess we're looking straight on at the Belair side, is that correct? And that's the, the narrow side of the lot?
That's correct.
And what's behind the fencing is not, that, it looks to me like the fencing is enclosing an area that's larger than that width. Is that correct? I mean, that looks more than.
Yes, they, we believe the adjacent property owner has taken it upon themselves to fence in the city's property.
Okay, that's, I was wondering about that. I thought, well, that looks to me like it would be double what we're talking about, so why is it all fenced in?
Yes, we believe that they are the one interested in purchasing the property as well.
Okay, so what, I mean, do you have any idea what they have in mind for the property? Are they going to build a house there?
That, that we don't know.
Okay, it's.
I'm guessing we realized they were squatting on our property.
Yeah, well, I, I just, it looked, it looked curious to me because I, I, I'm looking at, at the map here. And then I'm looking at the photograph and it clearly looks more, it looks wider than, than what's there. And then that, so the fencing is, was an odd, an odd thing. So, okay, thank you.
Counselor question, do we have a challenge here with precedent? People using the property of the city and then basically taking this path. Like, is, is there, I mean, this ain't great, for sure, having a fence on city property.
They, they can't claim acquisitive prescription against the government. So, you know, we probably would ask them to move it. I, I don't know the background on this case, so I was just assuming just from, from the condition. But I, I don't know of any case where this has happened, but I'm sure it's happened before.
Yes, thank you. Yes, as, as with all property dispositions, this will be sold at auction to the highest bidder that meets the minimum assessed, assessed value.
Okay, what is the rough timeline on that?
There's no deadline, what, after the city planning commission acts. It's, it's whenever the Department of Property Management wants to take it to city council to approve an ordinance for the, for the sale. Though, since they, I'm told they do have an interested buyer, I think it will be this year.
Okay, right, thanks so much.
Commissioner Lahn, one question also, is a 20-foot frontage, anything that could be built by right there?
Yes. Because the lot is under separate ownership. And with a recent change in the text of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, they would be allowed to build a single-family house there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing them, let's, let's move on to property acquisition. Property acquisition 00122.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This request, this property in question includes one block of the former Thalia Street right-of-way. Separating two municipal squares, 240A and 241, also between Carondelet and Barone Streets. The right-of-way measures approximately 44.76 feet in width by 380 feet in length. These two squares have been developed by Brown's Dairy, which has since relocated and the buildings have been demolished. In 2021, the city planning commission approved subdivision docket 1421, which created 11 new lots with frontage. Along this 1,700 block of Thalia Street. The developer has constructed this street segment along with drainage, sewer and water utilities. In accordance with city and sewage water board specifications, and they are now proposed for donation to the city. And the staff recommends approval of the acquisition subject to one proviso.
Thank you. And is there anyone from the city on behalf of this commission?
I don't believe we have anyone here today.
Okay, are there any questions?
If I may, this is.
Go ahead, Mr. Sherman.
So I'm borrowing my colleague Miles' login for a different agenda item, but our client is the requester of this acquisition. So I'm happy to answer your question, Commissioner.
Your client, the city?
My, my client is the Requester of the acquisition, the city is actually the applicant on. I apologize on the, the last matter a moment ago, I see that the YouTube was delayed on the Harrison Street acquisition.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're here for the Harrison Street? That disposition though.
Disposition, looks like YouTube is not linked up timely with Granicus.
A 20-second delay.
This is a delay.
So, so we're, we're on, we're on the acquisition, not, we're no longer on the disposition. But since we have you here, we were asking about that particular property at the corner. And the curious situation that exists with the fencing around the entirety of city-owned piece.
Yeah, so that was a parcel that the city acquired many decades ago to create a second entry into Jefferson Parish. That project was abandoned many decades ago. And the city no longer pursued that. Our client owns the adjacent property to the rear. That is not their fencing, that was in that picture. They have maintained that property when it wasn't getting cut with grass at different times. So they're trying to reunite the parcel to how it previously existed for residential construction.
So they would, they own the, they own the, the adjacent parcel that joins it? So they would build on the entirety of it, or they would build on the 20-foot wide piece?
They would re-subdivide post-acquisition into a conforming parcel. Cause that parcel, that little strip is too small to be a conforming parcel under the lot regulations. So they would re-subdivide into a conforming parcel for the purpose of construction. So they would in essence be reuniting the tract to how it previously existed prior to the city acquisition. Many, many years ago, when there was a thought of a second bridge over the canal into Jefferson Parish.
Okay, Mrs. All, of course, if they acquired at the auction.
It, it is, and I, it is my understanding from discussing these auctions with real estate and records. That the city routinely presents a parcel from being orphaned. So once there is a fair market value, only eligible bidders would be able to re-subdivide into a conforming parcel. So at this point, it'd be one of the two that are adjacent would be the only two eligible bidders.
Okay, then, Commissioner Brown, are you finished?
I'm done, thank you Kathleen.
Then I wanted to ask, because if I understood Paul, when we were finishing up for the discussion, that with the new, with recent text amendments to the CZO. That a single family could be constructed on the 20-foot frontage lot.
That's correct, it, it hasn't just recently been passed and hasn't been added to the online CZO yet. We just received the copy of the ordinance from the clerk recently.
Okay.
It was a part of the small multifamily text amendment. Allowing for substandard lots to be developed with either a single or double. Depending on what the base zoning district allows.
Before I get back to this project, is there a place where we could go to look at these text amendments to know them now? Or where would we go to reference these recently passed text amendments?
Well, the recent ones, I get a copy of an ordinance. And we put them into the, the online CZO as soon as we can.
Okay, so it'll be there soon.
So I don't know if you're interested in being able to see a copy before it's put into the online CZO. Or if you would just maybe like a notice that it has been added to the.
Do you have it in the form, like, all, all of the recent text amendments in an easily transferable form that, that I could request it for the commissioners?
When we add them to the online CZO, we put them on a table. That is a running table of all text amendments that have been approved since the new CZO was adopted in 2015. So I could easily add you to the email distribution list for that.
Okay, I appreciate it, I think maybe other commissioners would too. And, but they could speak up, I guess, if they would. I'd also like to get back to then what Mr. Sherman was just saying, that then, then that changes who the eligible. Bidders would be for this purchase, is that correct? That will change, the, it will no longer be just a non-conforming lot. It could be built upon on its own. It could be built upon on its own. So when it comes to auctioning this property, it would be available, you know, there, there would be many eligible bidders. Any, anyone.
Might be many eligible bidders, but there, uh, might not be that many interested bidders.
No, right, but I mean, uh, and Mr. Sherman, if you could address it, did you realize there was this recent text?
But, but that's not, if I could, that doesn't really relate to our issue, I mean, we're supposed to decide if we're gonna, um, if the city.
Allow for the disposition of it.
To dispose of it, and from the city's point of view, the more bidders, the, the merrier, and, um, and if the price goes up, then Mr. uh, Sherman's client will have to bid more, but I, I don't, I don't see.
Yes, you're right. Withdraw that, yep, withdraw that, irrelevant.
Thank you. So, well, can we move on to the property, the current item up, which is the property acquisition, zero, zero, one, twenty-two?
Sure, I, I was, I was done the presentation of that, um. I think the, um, Mr. Sherman may have represented the applicant of that subdivision. If you had any questions. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah, that's right, Paul.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any questions for applicant or the staff?
Yes, I have a question, I was trying to get to my microphone. The city is looking to acquire this property from Brown's Velvet, is that correct?
It, it's not Brown's Velvet anymore, but, um, it would be, um, what's that, the name of the, the property?
Fourteen hundred Barone LLC.
Okay, what was, what was occupied by the Browns? So the city is looking to acquire this for?
So it would just be a public right-of-way, um, reconnecting the historic street grid, uh, like it was before Brown's Dairy. Um, and allowing these fourteen lots to, or is it, uh, eleven new lots to front on a public street. And, you know, the criteria is that the street needs to meet all the, all the standards of the Department of Public Works and the Sewage and Water Board. Sewage and Water Board has already indicated their acceptance, and I think we're just waiting on a, a final le- letter of acceptance from Department of Public Works, which is the one proviso.
And we did receive that letter, Paul, uh, contemporaneous to this meeting, so DPW has now confirmed the, the street does meet all city standards.
Fantastic, if you send that to me, save me a step.
So it's just the street, it's not the lots, those are still owned by the LLC, which will develop in, into. Is that correct?
That's right, Commissioner, this, this was the street, um, for, uh, its entire existence until Brown's Dairy acquired it from the city for an economic development project. Brown's Dairy shut down, uh, and left the site. Uh, the site has been completely demolished, and it was clear the right thing to do was to restore the historic street grid. Uh, this was done at private expense, interesting fun fact, it costs about six hundred thousand to put one block of street in, as we learned, uh, the challenging way. Uh, the street was done to city standards with new sidewalks, uh, and conforming, uh, specifications. It's now complete, DPW and Sewage and Water Board have inspected it, so this is the final step to donate it back to the city to, uh, restore the grid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. The next item is actually a subdivision ratification followed by a list of recommended deferrals. Um, do we go through their subdivision ratifications now?
We'll vote on those after the, uh, public comment.
After the recess, okay, so we'll be looking now for a motion for recess, uh, for comments for the next thirty minutes, and then we'll adjourn.
Commissioner Whittry will make a motion till three fifteen.
Okay, Commissioner Whittry, for a second.
One will second.
Commissioner Lund, uh, we'll be reconvening at three fifteen, is that what you said?
Yes, because I feel like we're having some audio issues, so that will give us time to let everybody in and, uh, allow us to access.
And I apologize if you're, if I'm presenting a delay, because it's certainly delayed in front of me. So I'll call the, the question for the recess, Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleck, yes, Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Steeg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Great, see you all at three fifteen.
Paul, are we ready to get started?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. I will take roll call before we begin. Commissioner Brown?
I'm here.
Commissioner Flick, President, Commissioner Lund? Commissioner Sieg?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Weidberg? Commissioner Weidberg? And Commissioner Whittry?
Present.
Okay, so we have, we have a quorum, so we can begin. All right, so the first item is zoning docket 00522.
There are no public comments.
And this zoning docket was staff recommended approval.
So this is Sieg, I move approval in accordance with staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Sieg, is there a second?
Brown will second.
Thank you. A motion from Commissioner Sieg for approval of the zoning docket 00522, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
I see there, thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Great, motion passes. Next is zoning docket 00622.
No public comments.
Thank you. And this was sent for deferrals to the March 8th meetings.
I'll make a motion to defer zoning docket 006-22 to the March 8th meeting.
Second, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittry made a motion for deferral for zoning docket 00622 to the March 8th meeting, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. If there's no discussion, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whittry? You're in mute, Commissioner?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Next is zoning docket 00722.
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. This is, staff recommendation is for approval with five provisos.
Which, which one is this?
This is the principal bed and breakfast.
Oh, right.
On charters.
So I'll, Commissioner Lund, I'll make a motion for approval subject to five provisos as recommended by staff.
Brown will second.
Thank you. Commissioner Lund made a motion for approval of the zoning docket 00722, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is zoning docket 00821, 22.
We have one public comment from Ryan Vidal, 1213 Constant Street, New Orleans, in support, representing Get Your Right Fight Academy LLC. Good afternoon, my name is Ryan Vidal, I am one of the owners of Get Your Right Fight Academy LLC. I want to thank everyone for their consideration of this matter. We are extremely excited to be part of this amazing neighborhood. Thanks again.
Larry, I think we just shared.
You were on your email.
Yeah, the public comments that Sean.
There we go. So this zoning docket is for approval with one waiver and seven provisos. I'm looking for a motion.
Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Now, second?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown made a motion for approval of the zoning docket 00822, seconded by Commissioner Lund. Is there any discussion? Now, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg? I see you're, he's giving me a thumbs up and a hand. Council, is that okay?
Yeah, the old mouse.
There we go.
Hand isn't as quick as it used to be. That's a, that was a yes.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Excellent. Motion passes. Next up is zoning docket 00922.
No public comments.
Thank you. This is the hotel on St. Charles Avenue. It says, staff reports for approval with 13 provisos.
This is.
Approval.
Was that with or without that waiver, Commissioner Brown?
As, oh, okay. The, the staff recommended the waiver, correct?
No, they recommended not the waiver. Without the waiver.
That's right. The, the staff recommended against the waiver and added a proviso to ensure compliance with the off-street loading provision, so.
Okay, Commissioner Sieg, would you second that, or would you prefer the, without the waiver?
No, I was, if it were seconded, I was going to ask if you would entertain an amendment to, to have it be that we grant the waiver based on consideration of the nine provisos.
Yes. Nine criteria. With the, as amended by Commissioner Sieg, or if you want to make that motion, Commissioner Sieg, I'll second it.
No, that's okay. Missy, was that something directed to us?
It was the nine.
The nine, you should have said nine criteria.
Oh, sorry, you're right. I should have said, that's exactly right, sorry.
Okay.
So can I offer an amendment before it's seconded, or after, Missy?
Why don't I withdraw my motion and let you make the motion? That might be cleaner.
Okay.
Because it's your motion. Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion in, to, for approval, but with, but granting the requested waiver of the one off-street loading zone on the basis that the nine criteria are met. The staff report advised that they, the staff considered them all met except for two, and I'm going to offer reasons why I think the other two are met. I don't think it was caused by the applicant, I think it's caused by the situation of the property being landlocked and only having narrow frontage on St. Charles. And I do think there's a demonstrable hardship because we've heard that other similarly situated properties and similar uses, that is hotels, don't have this, and so we're not, so to not let this property enjoy the same benefits that others do seems to me, to me to be a demonstrable hardship.
Thank you, Commissioner Sieg. Is there a second?
Commissioner Brown will second. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll repeat sort of the motion. Commissioner Sieg made a motion for approval subject to the modifications, as we previously stated, for zoning docket 00922, seconded by Commissioner Brown. And if there is no discussion, I will call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Just press your spacebar.
The spacebar didn't work, I promise.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is zoning docket 1022.
No public comments.
Okay, this is, staff report recommends approval subject to one proviso. This is the Last Chance Texaco on, I think it's Jackson.
Commissioner Whittry will move approval for zoning docket 010-22 with one proviso.
Commissioner Lund will second. Thank you. Commissioner Whittry made a motion for approval of zoning docket 1022, seconded by Commissioner One. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. It was very quick, question or sting. Next up is subdivision 00122.
No public comments.
Thank you. And this was tentative approval subject to three provisos. The blighted, the purchased blighted lot is what this is in reference to. Looking for a motion.
This is subdivision docket 001-22, right, by St. John?
Mm-hmm.
Right, move approval, or tentative approval with three provisos.
Second, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Whittry made a motion for tentative approval for zoning subdivision docket 00122, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Excellent. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is property disposition 00122.
No public comments.
And this is for the sliver of lot over in Lakeview. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Commissioner Brown will move approval.
Thank you.
Sieg seconds.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown moved for approval of subdivision, nope, of property disposition docket 00122, seconded by Commissioner Sieg. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Next is the property acquisition 00122.
We have one comment from Michael Sherman, 800 Barone Street, New Orleans, in support. "On behalf of our development team of Emerson Gibbs, Michael Meredith, David Hecht, and Peter Amat, we are pleased to support this donation of property. Thalia Street was sold by the city to Brown's Dairy as part of an economic development project. With the Brown's Dairy structure now gone, it is clear from an urban planning perspective that the right-of-way connecting Barone to Corundelet along Thalia must be restored. We were pleased to incorporate this restoration into the development plan, and we restored the street at private expense. We are now pleased to donate it to the city and thank DPW and city planning staff for their work and support." That's the only comment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Brown will move approval.
Commissioner on the second?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown made a motion for approval of, of property acquisition 00122, seconded by Commissioner Lund. If there is no discussion, I will call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Next up is the subdivision ratifications.
No comments?
Okay. Looking for a motion for approval of the subdivision ratifications.
I'll move to ratify.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Is there a second?
Whittry will second.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown made a motion for approval for ratifications, for the subdivision ratification, seconded by Commissioner Whittry. If there's no discussion, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And then the next docket items, zoning docket 1122, 1222, 1322, 1422, 1522, 16, and 17 are all set for deferral. Is this all for the March 8th meeting?
So February 22nd.
Oh, February 22nd. I'm skipping ahead, for the February 22nd meeting.
Commissioner Whittry will move deferral to February 2nd, 22nd, for all the zoning dockets that Commissioner Lund just read out to all of us.
Second, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittry made a motion for deferral for previously stated subdivision dockets to the February 22nd meeting, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. If there are no comments, questions, I'll call the question. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Flick, yes. Commissioner Lund?
Yes.
Commissioner Sieg?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
I was pretending to be Commissioner Sieg.
Thank you. Commissioner Whittry?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion, motion passes. That, that's funny. That concludes our business for today. Hope you all stay well. We're looking for a motion for adjournment at 3:35.
I move for adjournment at 3:34.
Okay.
Seconded, Commissioner Lund?
Thank you. All in favor, we can just wave.
I'm not waving.
No, you're talking. This is good. It's amazing.
The mic's on, though.
I'm just going to let y'all know, the current emergency declaration expires on the 16th. I don't know if it's going to be extended. I'm, I'll, we'll see, but I know the council's going back in person, so I will let y'all know if it's extended or not, but just be on the awareness of that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Missy, is that something we would, we would make a determination on going back in person, or you would just let us know?
I think that we had talked about that, as long as we could have virtual, we were going to stay virtual just because of the logistics. It's, you know, the council has their own staff, they have access to multiple rooms, they, you know, it's, it's a lot easier for them to crowd control and control things. So basically, I think the, what everyone had said was, as long as we were allowed to, we wanted to stay doing it. If that changes, y'all can certainly decide not to, but you need to consult, we would have to consult with the health department to make sure it's safe. That's what the council had to do, and present a plan and all that stuff.
All right, thank you.
But if the governor does not send it, then that's not an option to.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Well, thanks, guys. See you next time.
Okay, everybody stay well.
Commissioner Flick, bye, everybody.